음흠. It's already time is it ah, still super weird. Ah, not having a brace. Um, it's already twenty-three, twenty-three, eleven, twenty-three at night. And finally finished a chapter. And so like the usual, I just want to, you know. You know, yeah. So um, okay, I'll answer now. And um, how do I do this? So uh, let's go to discussion questions first. I plan on answering everything though. So uh, may take a while or a long. But doesn't matter. I'm not sure if anybody will watch this. So uh, as long as I get to record then. So yeah. I wish I put it down. So let us begin.
Oops.
It would be better. This is in here?
I think.
Would it be better? Yeah. It's better at least. Okay, so should I put this up? Okay. So let us proceed to discussion questions. So the first question is, okay, learn to control your voice, not just train yourself or be overly excited. So yeah. So the first question is, the accounting cycle involves ten steps to accomplish the accounting process. Enumerate these processes. And so the first um, process is to identify uh, what happened in the transaction. Next is to um, journalize uh, the business transaction. Which is, you know, identify the, what are the two accounts that are affected by the transaction? Uh, what do you debit and what do you credit? And or what do you, what are the increase and decrease between the um, accounts in that transaction? So next would be uh, after the journal should be the ledger? You put it in the general ledger. So after you put it in the ledger, you uh, the general ledger is um, you know uh, where you um, total the account balances of each uh, of the journal. So how you, the cash account and then you total all the accounts there like the, you get the balances of each account from the start of the period to the end. As a monthly and so it's usually done by month, I think. So yeah. And after you uh, general, after the general journal you um, stop saying um, after the general journal, you do a, well, trial balance. So a trial balance is to see whether every uh, the daka, the debit and credit is in balance. So yeah, should be in the asset. Um, you put all the uh, accounts with in, you call this? You put all the accounts in account title in order. Gosh, it's so hard to make a point. And so yeah, uh, that's it. You put them in order. It's usually in the order of assets, uh, liabilities, equity, and then the owner's equity accounts, the temporary accounts, the income and expenses account. So in that order, you put the, then their balances. From the general journal, you put the total balances of each account and then you uh, list them. And they should be in order and they should have a balance of uh, a debit and credit balance. And so if it's not in balance, if the credit is uh, bigger than the debit, then there may be mistake. And next is after the trial balance, you I don't know, prepare the, prepare the uh, financial statements. I think you prepare the financial statements. And then the post, closing trial balance. And then I may be wrong here already, but let's go back. Cause I have clearly forgotten the order. So I was, oh, no, no, no. After the preparation of the trial balance, you prepare the worksheet. You prepare the worksheet uh, including financial statements. And then after including the, after preparing the worksheet that includes the financial uh, including the adjusting entries, then you make the, or you prepare the financial statements. Okay? And so the next step is adjusting of journal entries are journalized and posted. Oh, adjusting our journal entries are journalized and posted. And then the eighth step is closing journal entries are journalized and posted and then preparation of a post-closing trial balance. And the step ten is reversing entries are journalized and posted. So to go back, I'm just reading. Is to identify the transactions to be recorded. Then you journalize and then after you uh, journalize the transactions, you go to the general journal. Uh, you put them in the general journal. Then after you transfer them to the general journal, you prepare a trial balance. So a trial balance is uh, so a trial balance is um, hard. So I guess I was wrong before. So in the general journal, you just classify. So this is the third step. You classify them from, you classify them for assets, liabilities, owner's equity in uh, income and expense accounts. Okay, so that is the general journal and then so you prepare a, so that's the general journal. And then the next is you prepare a trial balance. And so a trial balance is need to differentiate. So this is the journalized. So step three is the posting of the general journal. How is it different from trial balance? Ah, okay. So in the general journal is you missed the, my gosh, this is still the first question and I'm already eleven minutes. And so in the general journal, you put the or you classify the transactions in the journals. So all the uh, uh, movement of cash is you put it in the general journal where under the account cash. So everything that happened in cash from November, for example, from November one, it uh, you increased cash. And so you put in there in the general journal, um, the debit. And then on November ten, then your next, and then so on until the uh, end of period. So you put them all in there and yeah, the movement. And so um, that's it. That's the general journal. And then the next is, so the general journal is in the third. So the fourth is to prepare a trial balance. So a trial balance is uh, the remaining balances of, uh, the remaining balances of the accounts from the general journal. So these are the, uh, this uh, eh, this is the, these are the remaining balances from the accounts, of the accounts from the general journal. So how much was the remaining balance at the end in cash? Like how was the, now how was the, how much did you expense? How much income did you gain? How much expense the total uh, from every account? Yeah. So that's it. The total balances of each account at the end. And that's the trial balance. Uh, both accounts, uh, both sides should be equal. So the debits and credits must be equal. And then after you made a trial balance, you prepare a worksheet with the adjusting entries in there. So um, the, so the adjusting entries are, I haven't got into that part yet, but um, adjusting entries are, you know, the accrual, uh, the expenses. The, so yeah, I just, I'll just, uh, this will be tackled in the next chapter. So that's it. And so after the worksheet and the adjusting entries, you prepare the financial statements for the period. And then after you have prepared the financial statements, you prepare the closing entries. So you close the accounts which uh, you transfer the income to, uh, you transfer the, you subtract the income and the expenses. Then you add or subtract the profit or loss to the equity account, whether you profited or you, you know, gained a, got a loss. So after that's uh, transferred in the um, uh, if that's been transferred in the owner's equity account, then it's officially closed. Yeah, the balances will be zero. So that is after the adjusting entries, after the um, oh no, I am wrong again. It's preparation of financial statements. And then adjusting journal entries are journalized and posted. And then closing. So yeah, and the preparation of, this will be, this will be tackled later, but that's it. Then after the preparation of the financial step, the statements, which is step six, next is the adjusting journal entries. Adjusting journal entries are journalized and posted. Next is closing, closing journal entries are journalized and posted. And then step nine is preparation of a post-closing balance. And the step ten is reversing journal entries are journalized and posted. So those are the ten steps. Wow. And so what are the four basic steps that should be followed to attain a structured analysis of uh, transactions? So the four basic steps is to, gosh, I forgot. So the four basic steps to be followed to attain a structured analysis of transactions is my gosh, these are the ones that are so hard to remember. Uh, it should be um, so first you should, so in order to attain a structured analysis of transaction first is, I should remember this. The first to gain a, to have a structured analysis is to identify the transactions from source documents. And then after you have identified the, identified uh, from the source documents, you um, indicate the accounts that are affected. Or you identify it, whether this affected the assets, the liabilities, or the owner's equity, or what account, or the specific account that is affected by this transaction. And then after you have determined what are the accounts involved in the transaction, uh, you determine uh, the increase or decrease of the said accounts. And then using the rules of how debit and credit, determine whether to debit or to credit the account to record its increase or decrease. So yeah, that's it. I'm just uh, reading what happened in the, uh, what are the, so yeah, that's it. I just said the answer. And yeah. So journal entries are based on documents evidencing the occurrence of a transaction. Um, I did find if I like, now it's too bright. Okay? So um, that. And then like that should be better. So um, journal entries are based on documents evidencing the occurrence of a transaction. Give at least five examples of these source documents. So source documents are those um, receipts, uh, promissory notes, I think, promissory notes, um, you know, invoice, sales invoice. What else? Sales invoice, promissory notes, and then uh, delivery notices. And you know, checks. And yeah, so those are the source doc. So yeah, so those are source documents are um, proof, the proofs that are, uh, that a transaction has happened. Uh, yeah, that's it. That a transaction happened that ha, that affects the business. And so um, yeah, those are the source documents. So state the rules of the double entry system. So the rules of the double entry system, uh, what are the official rules? The double entry system. I don't really, I'm not really sure of the, but I can say that um, my honest opinion, not a reliable source of information. From what I understood, the rules of the double entry system is that every transaction, every uh, business transaction affects, it's based to uh, accounts, at least. And that these accounts should be equal in debit and credit balances. So yeah, so these uh, transactions that occurred and accounts involved should maintain an equal balance of debit and credit. So that is the, from what I understand. So debit means increase and credit means decrease. Is this statement always true? Explain. And it is not true because um, those that have debit balances will increase uh, eh, as they are debited. And then credit, those with credit balances will increase as they are credited. But if you uh, credit a debit account, then the debit account will be decreased because you credited it. You credited it, which is the, yep, that's just the effect of it. And if you debit a credit, a normal credit account, then it'll decrease as well. So debit doesn't always mean increase and credit not always mean decrease. So yeah, that's it. And then what are the information contained in the general journal? Discuss each briefly. Um, the information contained in the general journal are that the date of the transaction. It's at the, that most site, it's a, the general journal is like a table. Then the small table here, it's uh, yeah, the, the date can be seen. And then after the date, um, there are, there is the, I think it's the particulars. Yeah, the particulars which uh, that which accounts are affected. So the first, the top one should always be the debit. And then the following table should be credit and the credit should be indented just below the um, debt uh, the debit account. So um, it should be like this, like the debit should be here and then the credit should be here. So yeah. And after the, the next table would be um, there's the debit and then the credit table. So if you debit the, uh, if the account has a debit balance, then you put the debit amount and then the credit, the credit amount. And then they should always remain a balance of equality. So yeah, and then the third, uh, third, um, uh, the third sit column, uh, the, the third column is uh, just below the credit is the explanation. So what happened in this transaction? And that's it. There's no debit or credit, just an explanation. So yeah. And I think that's it. Ah, you also post the post-reference or the reference number of the journal. So yeah. Of the account. The reference number of the account. Like for example, if uh, in the, in the, in this journal entry, uh, the accounts that are involved are cash and um, accounts. I don't know. A cash and then you receive an account receivable. So you bought an hmm. So um, you received a payment from a debt. And so you debit cash, because to receive cash. So you debit it because a cash is, uh, a cash has a normal debit balance. So to increase debit balance, you debit, like a debit account, you debit it. So debit cash and then you credit um, ah yeah, you credit accounts receivable because wait, huh? Is that right? What the transaction is, you bought something on account. I know you were paid. You were paid from an ac, a debt. So when you were paid, you obviously received um, cash. So increasing cash. And then you have a decrease in accounts receivable, which is uh, you know, counted. So you should decrease the accounts receivable because you've already received um, you know, the account that you should receive. So you decrease it because you received it. And so it should be, so from like uh, debit, from a debit account, you credit the debit account to decrease its hmm, to decrease its amount. So yeah. So at the end of it, you had a debit account. You debited something and then you credited something. So yeah, that's it. And then the third table, a third, I think all this, a third row, column? Yeah. Third column is you put explanations. So uh, received cash from payment. So yeah, that's it. So yeah. Those are the informations found on the general journal. And then what is a compound journal entry? Hmm, compound journal entry is Hmm, compound journal entry is So uh, something, uh, a journal entry that has uh, more than two accounts involved. And so let's say for example, uh. You bought something on account but paid a down payment to it, like you bought a computer but you weren't able to uh, pay it fully. So you had to hmm. So you had to, what do you call this? So you had to uh, make a down payment and make a debt as well. So the computer is ten thousand pesos. So you're only able to pay eight thousand and then you still have a remaining payment of um, you still have the remaining payment of two thousand and e, the equipment which is worth ten thousand pesos. And so what, so what happened is you receive um an uh, equipment which is uh, worth ten thousand. And then you credit cash worth eight thousand. And then there's another account which is accounts payable of two thousand because you weren't able to pay it fully. So there are two credit uh, two credit accounts involved. So three in total. One debit and two credit accounts, which equals ten thousand. Which still totals at ten thousand. In equality. So yeah, that's it. Compound journal entry. So discuss the features of a chart of accounts. So uh, chart of accounts, um. These are the accounts that can be found or that are used by the business to account for things. And there's um, they have a post reference number for each account to you know, for cross referencing or easy tracking. So an example would be the post reference number for cash is zero zero one. And the accounts receivable is zero zero two. So if you want to find uh, cash accounts in the journal, you just find the post references of zero zero one instead of finding the actual words. And that's it. And the chart of accounts are usually um, org- uh, organized in the sequence of cash uh, no, not cash, assets, liabilities and equity. So yeah, that's it. Hmm. So the normal balance of assets, withdrawals and expenses is debit. While that of liabilities, owners equity and income is credit. Why is this so? Hmm. Why is this so? Hmm. Yeah, why is this so? I think it's because of the from ancient times. Um, what debit means, which is debere. Which is to where have I read it? Oh my gosh, I don't know. My gosh, I don't know. So um. Why is that so? I guess that's just how things are. A lot enough. I think it has something to do with what uh, debere means and credere means. So yeah, those are related. And um, I'll just proceed. So describe the act of posting. What difficulties could arise if no cross indexing exists between the general journal and the ledger accounts? Uh, if there is no cross indexing, which uh, I guess the number found on the accounts, um, it would be a lot more difficult, I think, to find the accounts because there are so many accounts that are going on. There are so many numbers. You have to, uh, if you make a mistake later, uh, it would be really hard to find the account that you're looking for. So single mistake can mess up the entire accounting process because um, it could lead to complications of it not balancing and with all the uh, accounts. And it would be really difficult to find what is causing the anomaly. So yeah, cross indexing helps. Because you don't need to look at every single transaction. You just need to look at the uh, index number of the account. So that's it. So a trial balance is a list showing all account titles in the general ledger and the total debits and total credits in each account. Is this statement true, why or not? A trial balance is a list showing all account titles in the general ledger. Hmm? I'm losing my mind. I'm getting sleepy. A trial balance is a list showing all account titles in the general ledger and the total debits and total credits in each account. A trial balance is a list showing all account titles in the general ledger, the total debits in each account. Is this statement true, why or why not? Uh, yes, it is true. Uh, it is true because um, what you do in the general journal is you put the bal- total balance of each account. So you put in the dates and then the debits and credits that happened. And then you put the, you total them all. You add the and um, no, no. Um, you try to equalize the debit and credit. And if the credit and if the debit has more amount than it has a debit balance. And if the account has more credit, it has a credit balance. And so what happens is you find the total balance of each account in the uh, ge- uh, general journal over the periods and then ugh, so yeah, that's it. Um, the general journal is you put the business transactions of the business, right? Then you uh, you put in the accounts and every transaction, but not necessarily in uh, classified. So the general journal is, uh, so the general ledger is uh, you classify all of the accounts. In the general journal. Oh yeah, that's it. And uh, yeah, that's it. Uh, the general journal is you, yeah, you classify all the transaction, uh, the accounts used in the general journal, in the general ledger. And then you total them. You got the uh, balance. Like how much uh, cash was really uh, how much was really the balance of the cash at the end of the period? Or the accounts receivable over time, like how much is the balance of it at the end of the period? So yeah, you get it in the general journal. You get it in the general ledger. And then, yeah, that's it. So number eleven is true. So the general journal uh, shows the total debits and total credits in each account. So cite some errors that will cause the debits and credits with the trial balance, not the balance. Um, some errors that will cause the debits and credits of the trial balance, not the balance is um a slide which is moving the decimal point or a transposition, uh, which is reversing the order of the numbers. I'm just reading here a little. So yeah, that's it. And cite some appearances which despite the presence of errors, will still make the debit and credit columns, the trial balance equal. Um, an example is when you fail to record a transaction of the business. So um, the accounting would still be balanced, but um, when you count the money, it'll be overstated because obviously there is something missing um, from the co- computation because you missed the account one event. And you understate the, you know, other account as well. So the cash will be overstated because you failed to, you know, account for something and then an account will be understated. Because there was no accounting when there should have been. And so um. We found out that the total of the debits column or the trial balance is two hundred thousand. While the total of the credits column is one hundred eighty thousand. What are some possible causes of this difference? If the difference between the columns is divisible by nine, what types of errors are possible? Um, so if the difference between the columns is divisible by nine, the possible errors are um, transposition or a slide. A transposition is like what I said before. It is when you reverse the order of uh, the numbers. So instead of two thousand one hundred twenty, you put one thousand two hundred twenty instead. So yeah. Or two thousand one hundred twenty and you put two thousand one hundred, uh, two hundred ten. So yeah, that's it. That's a transposition and a slide is when you mistake put an error in the decimal point, which is, let's say for example, the cash was supposed to be twenty seven thousand eight hundred, but what you put is two thousand eight hundred only. So yeah. Two thousand seven hundred eighty. So yeah. And yeah. I think that's it. I haven't really tried out this. Um, subtract by nine. So I, yeah. The accountant mistakenly recorded a five hundred peso purchase of supplies on account as a five thousand purchase. Hmm. He debited supplies and credited accounts payable for five thousand. Does this error cause the trial balance to be out of balance? I explain. So the accountant mistakenly recorded five hundred pesos purchase of supplies on account as a five thousand purchase. Uh, yes. Yes, it does. Hmm, does it? Hmm, let's see. So what happened now is he recorded the purchase of supplies on account as a five thousand purchase. So if you purchase this, then that means you lose cash. And then you lose cash and then you gain supplies. So it's an asset. But if, it should have been recorded as purchase of supplies on account. Then what happened is you should be deb- you should debit supplies and then credit accounts payable. So yes, I think it does cause the trial balance to be out of balance because that's it. No. I don't think it does because it'll still equal the debits and the credits at the end. Because there's no mistaking in the there's no mistake in recording. There's just a mistake in, uh, there's no mistake in uh, the numbers. It's just a mistake in recording uh, uh, the events, the transaction. So it'll still be balanced, but um, the accounting would not be accurate then. So yeah. It won't be out of balance. How would balance sheet accounts be affected if an expense was erroneously recorded for twenty two thousand rather than sixteen thousand? How would balance sheet accounts be affected? How affected if an expense was erroneously recorded for twenty two thousand rather than sixteen thousand? How would balance sheet accounts be affected? Um. It, the debits wouldn't be I don't think it'll really affect the balance sheet accounts. It'll just, you know. Balance sheet accounts, it'll just, you know, mess up the. The balancing of the debits and credits at the end, so yeah. It'll just mess up the balance. Yeah, that's it. But if ever it is uh, recorded like that, the. Um, the account which was expensed on would be adjusted? Yeah. I think. So you would lose out, you would lose. The balance sheet account would be sh- affected or it'll be decreased. I think. So yeah, that's it. I should answer this as well. Should I? Or should I not answer this? I think I should answer this. Let me just start it first and so done, wait. I think that I should. You know, be responsible and actually answer everything, not just the. Um, discussion questions but also the true or false and the, yep, everything. And so I should get off it. So when payment is received for services not yet rendered. No entry is recorded until that service has been rendered. So when payment is received for services not yet rendered, no entry is recorded until that service has been rendered, so. That is false because. You, uh, you record cash and then. You also record, what do you record? Um, is it unearned revenue? So yeah, that's it. You put in unearned revenue as a liability. That's it. I think that's it. So yeah, you put in unearned revenue. And so when revenue has been earned, no entry is. Recorded until the related cash has been collected. So that is false as well, so. You record things as they happen. I think that's a, an accounting principle. So you cor- you record things as they happen, not when they are settled or whatever. So yeah. The cash will be. Uh, the recording for cash will be followed up when it is received. But you record the event, the transaction that happened. So you will just, so what happens will be. You record revenue and then you record uh, accounts receivable. In the debit, so you debit accounts receivable and then you credit income. Or revenue, so in trial balance, all debits are listed before all credits. Hmm, no. Hmm, no. Um. In a way, uh, yes, but that's no. Um, in a trial balance, eh, um, all debit, uh, all assets. Which usually have a. Uh, so I guess this is true in a way, I guess, because. It is sequenced as assets, then liabilities, then owner's equity. And then income and expense accounts. So, no, it's leaning to the no side. Because it's not debits and credits, it's by account. So yeah. And a trial balance is normally prepared at the end of the day, uh, nope, it's the end of the period. So when the columns of the trial balance are equal. No errors have occurred in recording and posting their transactions. When the columns of the trial balance are equal. No errors have occurred in recording and posting transactions, it is false. Because there may be errors in, uh, that occurred in the recording and posting of the transactions, it's just that. Um, the accounting, uh, the debits and credits equal anyway. Despite the error and. Yeah. And recording an account with a debit balance as credit or vice versa will cause trial balance to be. Out of balance by an amount that is divisible by two. Um, not necessarily, no, so this will be force, false because. Um. Yeah, this is just false. Um. It will cause the trial balance to be out of balance, of course. But it wasn't, but I don't think that there's a specific amount. That it'll be. Divisible by, uh, maybe nine, but not sure. So the j- the journal is a chronological record of all transactions. So yes, that is true. Journal is a chronological record of all transactions. Entering transactions into the journal is called posting. Ah, yeah, it's posting, oh wait, no, is it? Um, entering the transactions into the ledger is posted. Let's clarify. Journalized and then. Yep, posting is not on the journal but on the ledger. So um, yeah. In a proper journal entry, credits are always indented. Hmm, yeah, credits are always indented, that's true. Um, in a proper journal entry, the post reference or P R column. Is left blank until the entry has been posted. In a proper journal entry, the post reference or P R column is left blank until the entry has been posted. Uh, yes, because you have to wait what account. Uh, what accounts, uh. Post reference should you put there, so until an entry has been posted then. You should le- leave it blank, I think, so yeah, that's how I understand it. But it may be better to, you know, add the post reference as you. Journalize, so yeah. It is sometimes correct for a compound entry. It is sometimes correct for a compound entries debit totals and credit totals to be unequal. Uh, no. I'm not sure. It is sometimes correct for a compound entries debit totals and credit totals to be unequal. Um. Yes, I think. Um, like when you, uh. Let's say when you journalize, so what you're trying to actually get is the. Uh, balance of the account and it's basically just a debits and then credits. So you subtract and, and then you get the remaining balance. Which is, yeah, doesn't really balance it, so yeah. So yeah, that's it, maybe wrong for this, but it is sometimes correct. I know, my explanation was wrong. So uh. Yeah, sometimes. Like the, uh, or no, this will be a violation of the double entry rule, so no. Transactions are recorded in chronological order in the ledger, no. They are recorded by account. So when the owner makes an investment, the owner's capital account is debited, uh, false, should be credited. So when a withdrawal is made, the owner's withdrawal account is debited and cash is credited. When a withdrawal is made, the owner's withdrawal account is debited and cash is credited, true, true, true. Liabilities are established with debits and eliminated with credits. No, it's the other way around, liabilities are established with credits. As per the accounting equation, which is assets is equals to liabilities plus equity. Assets is debit, liabilities is credit, so yeah. And then. Unearned revenues are classified as liabilities on the balance sheet. True, true, true. Another word for expense is debt, so that's not true. So. Another word for debt is liability, but it's not expense. Office supplies are classified as expenses, yes, it's a prepaid expense. Because, you know, it'll, you, these, uh, office supplies are meant to be consumed. Or used up by the business, so it's a prepaid expense. So the land account and the building account, they be combined into one account, so. No, I don't think this is true. Because the amounts of each of these two accounts are too. Uh, material to be aggregated together, so no, they should ha- they should be accounted for separately. And a credit means that an account has been increased, so uh. I guess. I mean, a credit is. You know, credit, there's a different definitions, I think. And credit can also means debt, like credit card, yeah. So and an account means all could also mean that it is a. Uh, liability account or, uh, so yeah. So a credit means that an account has been increased, could be, could be, so this, uh, is true. So for me, that's true for me. A debit has an unfavorable effect on an account. Um, it's not that it has an unfavorable effect, more than, more than, uh, a debit. Decreases an account or debt. So yeah, that's it. For a T account, the account balance is the difference in total pesos between total debit footings and total credit footings. For a T account, the account balance is the difference in total pesos. Between total debit footings and total credit footings, yes, I think this is true. So cost is the exchange price associated with a business transaction at the time of. At the time the transaction is recognized. What? So it's getting a bit difficult. Cost is the exchange price associated with a business transaction at the time the transaction is recognized. So yes, I guess if in a way, uh, in a way. Cost is the exchange price, uh, basically. That is how much you pay when you acquire something and you pay with money, so yeah. Exchange price. When an entity hires a new employee, a recordable event has occurred. That's it, uh. Does it? Hmm. Nah, nah, so um. No, it doesn't because there's no, it can't be measured, I think. It can't be measured yet, unless you pay that employee. As he is hired, but just when he is hi- hired, nah, I don't think. That a recordable event has occurred. Or wait, maybe it does, like. Hmm. Like you record, uh, when he started working, I guess. So it's a true? I don't think. When an entity receives a product previously ordered, a record, a recordable event has occurred. When an entity receives a product previously ordered. A recordable event has occurred, yes. Because you ordered this and you received something in return, so yeah. You have paid for it as you ordered and then you received your orders, so there's a transaction that happened. And so, um, a basic storage unit for accounting or data is the account. So yes, it's the basics unit for accounting data, a basic storage. The accounts, yeah. I think that's a good way to put it. Another name for the ledger is the book of original entry. Um, no, it's the general journal, the book of original entry because the ledger is. Not really the original book of entry, it's, uh, the next phase. So the chart of account makes finding accounts in the ledger easier. Yes, it does. Also, it makes. It make, it allows the business to, um. Really have a formal set of accounts to be used in accounting, so yeah. Companies use the same standardized set of accounts. Not necessarily, no. I think. The accounts you, uh, the accounts in a chart of accounts are normally listed in alphabetical order, no, they are not. Um, from what, uh, based on what I know, right now it's based on liquidity. And, uh, it's ordered and, uh, it's based on the asset. Liabilities and owner's equity, so yeah, that's it. Salaries payable is a type of expense. Uh, no, salaries payable is a liability. So owners withdrawals are classified as an expense. Is it? Yeah, it is, it is an expense. Um, investments by the owner are recorded in the owner's capital account, not in a revenue account. Investments by the owner are recorded in the owner's. Yes, yes, it is. So, um, I guess this is wrong. Number thirty three is wrong, owners withdrawals are not classified as an expense, but. Owners withdrawals are not classified as an expense, but as uh. Con uh deductions, the. Yeah, I don't know, it's not an expense, so I was wrong. An expense is something that is. Uh. An additional cost for the business to run the business and a withdrawal is. Not uh. Something that can help the the business, so yeah. So a decrease in liability is recorded by a debit, that's true. An increase in asset is recorded by a debit, that's true. The double entry system is possible because all business transactions have two equal and opposite aspects. True, true. A decrease in owner's equity is reported with a credit. A decrease in owner's equity is recorded with a credit. False. So debit. An increase in revenue is recorded with a credit. True, true. So yeah, that's it for the true or false. So this is a lot of multiple choice. There's computations as well, but yeah, I need to. Start working early. And so um uh. Which of the following classifications of accounts has or have a normal credit balance? Hmm. Which of the following classification of accounts has or have a normal credit balance? All of these, I think, no. I think it's B, revenues and liabilities. Not all of these because withdrawals isn't happening. A purchase is recognized in the accounting records when. Uh the payment is made for the item purchased. So payment is made for the item purchased. So um. Yeah, that's it. So the primary purpose of the trial balance is to test the. Um the primary purpose of the trial balance is to test the quality of debit and credit entries in the journal. Yeah. I think it's in the ledger. The quality of debit and credit balances in the ledger. So let's see, so the general journal does not have a column titled. The general journal does not have a column. Title the account balance, so there's no uh balance, unlike the general ledger. So to find an explanation for a truck uh transaction, one should look at the journal. It's uh the journals, so the explanation can be found at the journal. Which of the following errors will cause a trial balance to be out of balance? Hmm. A, the journal entry was accidentally posted twice. So, yep, that's it. An eighty thousand, an eighty uh. An eight thousand credit item is accidentally posted as a debit. Trial balan- balance column totals. Will therefore uh. Will therefore differ by eight thousand. Of course. Which of the following entries recorded with the, which of the following entries. Recorded the withdrawal of cash? Which of the following entries recorded, yeah, which of the following entries records the withdrawal of cash for personal use. By Catherine, is it the owner of a business? So uh it's the debit, withdrawals and credit cash, so D. The trial balance will not expose which of the following problems? The trial balance will not expose which are the following problems, so A is recording half an entry. Leaving out and. Yeah, B, leaving out an entire entry. So recording about house of entry on the side, leaving out forty five, yeah. So that exposed the problem of leaving out an entire entry because. You can find it in the journal. So which of the following describes the classification of normal balance, dringer. Cabarrera capital. So it's a. Owner's, no. It's some credit, it's an anathese. So the normal balance of the ringer is credit, owner's equity. Which of the following describes the classification and normal balance of the service revenues account? Which of the following describes the classification and normal balance of the service revenues account? So it's a revenue and credit. Which of the following is an asset account? Um. Office equipment. So C, insurance expense, expense and sales are owner's equity and then. If a four thousand seven hundred cash purchase of supplies is recorded as a five thousand seven hundred debit supplies. If a four thousand seven hundred cash purchase of supplies. Is recorded as five thousand seven hundred debit. To supplies expense and five thousand seven hundred credit to cash. The result will be that. Uh. The supplies expense will be overstated and cash will be understated. Wait, let's try to understand, okay? So what exactly happened here? So if a four thousand seven hundred cash. Purchase of supplies, so. What should be recorded is um. Debit of, a debit of supplies and a credit of cash, what happened is. What happened is a debit of. Supplies expense. And a credit to cash. So it should be for supplies, but then. So the supplies expense will be overstated. And cash. And then cash will be. Would be understated, huh? Ah yes, it'll be understated. This four thousand seven hundred purchase, so it'll be understated. So um. Which of the following gives the correct sequence of accounting procedures? So it should be journal, it should be the ledger, trial balance. Uh that's B. Which of the following errors will not cause the debit and credit columns of the trial balance to be unequal? Which of the following errors will not cause the debit and credit columns of the trial balance to be unequal? Which of the following errors will not cause the debit and credit columns of the trial balance to be unequal? Hmm. Which of the following will cause the debit columns? So um. A debit entry was required in the wrong account, so yeah. It'll be um, I don't think that'll. It'll cause the trial balance to be unequal. But let's analyze what'll happen here. So if the balance of an account was incorrectly computed. It could. Cost the credit and the. Credit columns uh to be, you know, out of balance, then. The account balance was carried to the wrong column of the trial balance. So the account balance. So if it's carried to the wrong col- ah, no, no. So this will be C, this. Account balance was carried to the wrong column of the trial balance, not the wrong row. Which is uh, yeah, so uh this is letter C. So the column is the. So as long as it's not, yeah, the balance will remain. An entry with more than one debit or credit is called the compound entry. Which of the following accounts will not affect owner's equity? The um, the land. High expenses and withdrawals and income. Which of the following accounts has a normal debit balance? Hmm. Uh it's the owner's withdrawals. A purchase of supplies on account should be recorded as. A purchase of supplies on account should be recorded as. A purchase of supplies on account. Purchase of supplies on account. Should be recorded as. A debit to. Supplies and then. Credit to accounts payable. Supplies. And it supplies expense. A purchase of supplies on account, so it shouldn't be supplies expense, it's uh it's like that. I guess it's a supplies expense then. So supplies expense, then. Accounts payable. The owner's withdrawals account, the owner's withdrawal account, withdrawals account appears in. Um the balance sheet only. So it appears in the balance sheet though. No, it could appear in C and B, I think, I know it appears in the C, I think, statement of changes in equity only. I think. I may be wrong on this one, so. No, it appears in the balance sheet only. So yeah, that's it. Is this my answer? Which pair of accounts follows the rules of debit and credit in the same manner? Service revenues and equipment rentals revenues? Say that's it. Which of the following accounts has a normal debit balance? Um unexpired insurance. It's an asset. Which of the following errors will cause a trial balance to be out of balance? Incorrectly recording the purchase of then. For cash as debit to cash and credit for. Regarding to enter an entire transaction. Placing a debit balance. Amount into the credit balance of column of the ledger. A credit may result in an increase in liability accounts. The posting reference column in the general journal is used to show that an account has been posted to the ledger. When which of the following is placed in it? Uh. The journal number. No. A posting reference column in the journal. Is used to show that an account has been posted to the general ledger. Uh journal page number. Yep. A posting reference column in the general journal is used to show. That an account has been posted to the ledger. When which of the following is placed in it? It's. Journal number? Yes, journal number, C. Posting reference column in the general journal is used to show. That an account has been posted to the ledger. I'm not sure, it's journal number? So the principal purpose of posting is to. Um. Enter transactions directly to the ledger. Or obtain update and uh. Which of the following statements is true about proper journal entry? A line is keep between each debit and each credit, others are entered. Um the posting reference column is step that until entries are posted. True, 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 D. Which of the following events does not require any, uh which of the following events does not require an entry in journal form? Which of the following events does not require an entry in journal form? Agreement to perform a service at a future date. When a magazine entity receives an advance payment for subscription. Debit cash and I don't know. Debit cash and credit subscription revenue. Which of the following transaction decreases both assets and owner's equity? So uh which of the following transactions decreases both assets and owner's equity? Um. Withdrawal of owner cash. So which of the following transactions increases both assets and owner's equity? Uh. Rendered. So a payment received from a credit customer. So yeah. An increase in asset. And increasing revenue. A bank loan is an increase in asset and an increase in liability, so. Which of the following errors will cause. Of the trial balance to be out of balance? Um. An entire transaction was entered in the general journal at fifty three instead of thirty five. Yep. Which of the following account? Which of the following accounts might be placed first in a proper journal entry? So uh might be placed first in a proper journal entry interest income. So credit right, unearned revenues when it has been increased, so it's a liability credit. So bonds payable when it has been decreased, so it's a debit. So D, bonds payable when it's been decreased, because it's a credit, if it decreased, then it's been debit, then the journal entry debit always comes first. Which of the following accounts? Which of the following accounts would be credited in a proper journal entry? Um owners withdrawals, which of the following accounts would be credited? Um Which of the following accounts would be credited in a proper journal entry? Owners, yeah. Owners withdrawals. Which of the following accounts would be credited in a proper journal entry? So accounts receivable no, my brain is start breaking. Think, must think. Which of the following accounts would be credited? Ah, accounts receivable when it's decreased. So for which of the following accounts would would be related, accumulated, depreciated? Um it should be office equipment. The process of transferring journal entry information from the journal to the ledger is called post debits to ex- debits to expense accounts. Signify uh decreases in capital. So which of the following accounts is decreased with a credit? Um Rent expense. Yeah, so rent expense, so what happens when you credit an unearned? That's a credit's liability. If accounts payable has debit postings of hundred seventy thousand credit postings of hundred forty thousand and normal ending balance of sixty eight thousand. Which of the following was its beginning balance? So an accounts payable post debit posting has hundred seventy thousand. Credit postings of uh one hundred and forty thousand and a normal ending balance of sixty thousand. So it's seventy, so credit. So accounts payable is a credit. Debit postings of one hundred and seventeen. Credit postings of one forty thousand and a normal ending balance sixty thousand. So I need to total it up to sixty thousand, if that was the ending, right? And so um yeah. So obviously, hundred forty minus uh hundred seventy, so debit payable is uh credit balance and obviously debit is more than credit, so thirty thousand? Hmm so, negative thirty thousand. So it should be a, the beginning balance would be D. Ninety thousand. So that's my answer. So when collections are made on account, when collections are made on accounts receivable owner's equity, uh when collections are made on accounts receivable um total assets remain the same. Wait. So uh does it necessarily increase the owner's equity? Hmm what happens when uh No, doesn't increase. So the total assets remains There's a decrease in asset, but there's also an increase in asset. So the total assets remain the same. Which of the following accounts has a normal credit balance? Um Aver- averaging revenues. When a fee account has several items on both sides, the balance, so the account is on the side on the side with the larger dollar. A debit may signify a decrease in and a revenue uh liability and revenue account. So yeah, that's it. So I'm uh there's still a lot, but um I think this should be enough for today. I have bread or there's a lot of brothers tests. So there are these ten problems every chapter and so this one has uh fifteen, I think, do sixteen, twelve. So uh yeah. That's it. I need to work on it tomorrow, which is problem multiple choice. I need to finish this tomorrow, so. So yeah.